Starting, today is August 7th, 2019, meeting of the planning board and we're all straight. What's the first animal on the agenda?
Just the public hearing for the Lorax sustainable development.
Okay. So why don't those folks come forward and begin their presentation?
Thank you. My name is Tom Somon, principal of traffic and delivery over. The end property owner Mike Brigham is here as well. This is Victoria Point, project that we were in, I think it was April, on a professional basis when we came in at that point. We've worked out a lot of details since we were here then. But this is an overview of where we're at. This is the old, former better property, now known as Victoria Point. This is the Victorian home of the residents there. This is a carriage house that's going to be renovated into a single-family dwelling. This is the large car barn that is going to be removed as part of the project. And then this shows how the place holders on warehouses would like to go around the site. Shows the expanse of the river frontage. We've got open space here and in the front here, around two open space areas to fill our open space requirement. We have on sheet S1, note 14, we go through our open space zoning requirements to show how we come up with our yield that we do. Starting off with the total area, moving wetland, steep slopes, and working our way down to a allowable number lots of 7.1 lots, which rounds down to seven lots as we proposed, being one lot being with the existing Victorian home, one that would contain the carriage house, and then five building lots. As far as the package, you have sheet C1 that looks at the infrastructure that's requiring to do the project here. It's a short cul-de-sac of about 450 feet from start to end. As you go around, it turns out to be a little more than 650 in total length. But it has a grass island and we have drainage infrastructure that handles the cul-de-sac runoff with a little bio-retention area in the center of the cul-de-sac. We have another little bio-retention area there that handles the runoff from the rest of the roadway. We are proposing to extend city water, municipal water, that would come from the main in Silver Street, come down and terminate in a hydrant. And we have services that are dedicated to each one of the homes, including replacing the existing service to Victorian that would be replaced with a new service offer, a swap and remade. The utilities are proposed underground. We have a riser pole, an existing riser pole that we would use here on Silver Street. And we come underground and we would feed one transformer down here between lots 19-5 and 19-6. We've got another transformer here that would service these lots. And then a final transformer that feeds the existing home as well as 19-1, that's just off the page here. So we've got the underground electric telephone, we've got the city water. We have proposed, and we talked this morning, we met with the technical review group, we talked some things through as far as we are proposing a street light at Silver Street where there's an existing pole. We would place a new head on that to provide a street light right at the entrance. And then down at the cul-de-sac by this cluster of driveways, we're also proposing a new street light down there that would be more of a modern, as everyone calls it, they have a town and country style. It's more of a lantern look to it, more of a scale of residential area as opposed to a telephone pole with a big overhead lights on the top. And again, this morning at technical review, we talked about setting that outside of the right of way so that could be owned and maintained by the association, so it would be the responsibility of the town. As well, we've talked about the fact that we've got the street trees here. We have two trees per lot that we've proposed in addition to the existing trees that are on site. We do this without, all this infrastructure without clearing any of the existing trees that are out there. But we are adding street trees along here. Again, this morning we talked about the fact that this will be out of the right of way, so it will be on private property and not the responsibility of the municipality. We talked about the bio-retention areas and responsibility for maintenance on those. And then that's something that the homeowners association would like to take care of and maintain the bio-retention areas. They're fairly maintenance-free, but they do need any maintenance and that would be part of homeowners association to take care of those on an annual basis. We would provide an additional easement to the town for this one here in case the family begins to do the work there. We would provide an easement for that. I think those are the main highlights of what we've been doing. Again, this is under the cluster regulations, the open space regulations, where we're able to maintain this expanse of river frontage in common ownership by the homeowners association that is protected from further development here. No more additional units going to be constructed out here, as well as this front piece up here that keeps the aesthetic feel of the estate property and the view of the existing homes up. That was our goal with the layout. We, since we saw you, we've been to the zoning board on a couple of occasions to pin down one building envelope over here on lot 19-3. As we can see, the variance from the zoning board of adjustment to allow this envelope, this structure that you posed, constructed 50 feet closer than the 250 that's required on the balance of lots. So this lot here has a little enlarged envelope to move a little bit closer to the river on that. Like I said, we did meet with technical review this morning. I think most of the questions were in the steering wheel in nature. We've got some drafting issues, some things that we should clear up with the review engineer. I think I want to know if we're on the right track with the layout here. And certainly, I can't give you the new guys. And Mr. Krebs has done his review and recommended that we're complete and ready for acceptance and hoping that from our position, we can get that off the table and get some progress.
Okay, thank you. Any members that ask questions that I'm going to...
Yes, but if you don't mind, I think it might be prudent to review some of the issues that the technical review committee raised. They're going to be, they're asking for some revisions and since the public, you know, it could weigh into the public's questions and comments and also for this committee, this board to know too. I would actually recommend that this board not consider this application to complete until you had a chance to read through both the covenant and the memorandum from the technical review committee and can digest that information. And Krebs has not had a chance to review this version of the proposal. This morning's meeting went really well, starting with department heads. The highway department really appreciated the cul-de-sac design because it's easier to plow. They prefer for the center of cul-de-sacs to be paved, but allowing for drainage in the center is going to help with stormwater and that's certainly a worthwhile part of the project. The center will drain through a drainage between lots three and four, correct me if I'm wrong, which I might recommend that the planning board go out and do a site review before approval also. Before that, a site walk, because it's going to drain off into the neighbor's property to the left, which may require an easement, and so we may want to have a look at that. The fire department was there to echo the need for a cul-de-sac and they appreciated that and that there will be a fire hydrant at the end of the cul-de-sac. They have concerns about water pressure because the hydrants on Silver Street don't have good pressure. And the water department was there to also state the benefit of having a fire hydrant at the end of the line. This will be the end of the service line, which will help water quality to be able to flush at the end of the line. There is an adjustment, I think, in the plan. It currently says a six-inch main, which they recommended going up to eight-inch main. So they'll work that out with the water sewer department. There was some discussion about whether or not it would be worthwhile to extend the sewer line from just before the American region all the way up the hill and around, which would negate the need to install septic fields. That's for the applicant to decide. It would reduce the minimum lot size, so if they chose to do that, there would be, you know, a big capital expense, but they could get more lots out of it. So they may work that out and present a different proposal at another time that reflects that if they want to. The major concern of Jay Stevens, the engineer reviewing the proposal on behalf of the town, was that it's not clear from the plans where the septic designs fall in relation to the homes and in relation to the 250-foot setback to the river. The applicant agreed with the zoning board not to infringe upon that setback with the septic systems. Nowhere in the application are all those things in the same place. Further, in the application, the septic designs where they're noted seem to overlap warehouses may go. There's a disagreement between the applicant and the town about whether or not the cluster subdivision regulations and the subdivision regulations would trump the zoning ordinance that requires the minimum lot size for septic systems or whether the zoning ordinance would supersede the cluster subdivision regulations. So we're going to do some investigation about that, which may require legal advice. And then the applicant was very gracious to move the street light that's within the, near the cul-de-sac onto private property for their maintenance and expense. We appreciate that because the design is not always easy. We have a similar design on Stockdale and I think with Harris, and those parts aren't always easy to find. Trying to think what else. I don't know if you all remember any other permits.
No, I think that you're definitely, I mean, three things that jumped out at me from the meeting were were the water pressure issues or potential issues that the water company brought up, that they've asked us to do a pressure test on Silver Street as well as fire flow tests to find out what they are. They don't know what they are, but they said that that is at the outer limits of their system and they would like to test them out. So that's on our list to take care of, which is the water pressure tests as well as the fire flow tests. The, again, couple of issues that I guess we really weren't on the same page with the review from Mr. Stevens. One related to lot sizing. When I did my review of the ordinance, the cluster regulations within the zoning are pretty specific about how to deal with the lot sizing. We have, we have under the cluster sections, eight, seven, where we talk about lot configuration sizing setbacks. And that appears to keep the lot sizing requirement to meet the state sizing, the state regulations for the density on the property. Mr. Stevens had a different approach, approaching it from the subdivision regulations and where, again, you, I'm sure you're familiar with the name of lot sizing by soil type in your subdivision regulations. And that wasn't the approach we took, but since the meeting we had this morning, I had the opportunity to look at that. We had just gone on the basis that the zoning ordinance was in charge, but for sake of discussion, it is, I was surprised that the ordinance specifically addressed is how to deal with the cluster subdivision. And so I have looked at that and we do need the lot sizing requirements under the subdivision regulation as well.
So I think you were going to get Mr. Clark and Mr. Stevens and myself that regulation and start a discussion and make sure we're all on the same page.
Yeah, so that was the numbers in the table here addressed individual lot sizing. But under 11, 1, 1, 4B, it doesn't exist a cluster subdivision and describe type project. We've gone through that and feel comfortable that we were there, so we can certainly get the specifics to you on that.
But then there's the concern that the septic's overlapping with the home footprints as well.
Yeah, and that was the third issue that was on my radar screen. And I was a little confused from the standpoint that that is the area that we've shown on our plans, on your S2 in particular, showing 4,000 square foot suitable area, which is a state requirement. And the state does not regulate with the health conditions in that. I mean, the subdivision regulations, you have very specific requirements on what you require under 10, 10 dot 11 non-suitable area system site requirements, which doesn't require a 4,000 square foot area, but tells you how to ensure that you do have those areas. Again, Mr. Stevens specifically said in his cover letter to Mr. Hinsman, "We did not perform, give the septic system information as that will be addressed by NHG Suburban Systems Bureau." So we either then get into a discussion about the Suburban Systems Bureau. So I think if we stick to the state review and the state information and the town review and the town information, we can get through this a lot better.
Possibly. Nonetheless, I'm going to recommend that we don't, not find it complete until the town and applicant are on the same page.
Okay. I think I'd like to get in from obviously Mr. Krebs, also legal concerning lot size and interpretation, which trumps the other subdivision regulations, because it's a unique interpretation, which I think legal.
I feel comfortable having legal.
And again, if that's, my recent investigation said that there isn't conflict, that we apply to both interpretations. We comply with all interpretations. Again, for example, what we did here, I had a chance this afternoon to show, again, how these lots would be built. The state requirements of 4,000 square foot area that's suitable, these are for this type of soil, based on this test grid here, that you need approximately a system that's 200 feet square feet. That's what you need for a septic system. That 4,000 square feet isn't supposed to begin to need for a septic system. It's an area on the lot that you've got shot in here in a septic system. This is what we submit when we actually go to get a septic system approved, that shows the same house that we show on the other plans, but shows the actual footprint of the septic system and shows that there's plenty of room on the lot to achieve a septic system, a house, a driveway, three cars in the driveway, et cetera, et cetera. But again, this was just, I think I got a little blown out of proportion today as far as how to achieve, how to get these septic systems on each of the lot. And as well, we talked about the driveways, new building setbacks, that wasn't something I was aware of. What else you can see, just by pushing things around a few feet, it's not a monumental task to get the driveways to be, to be building setbacks. So this is more what you would see when you go for a septic design versus a subdivision.
All right, does anyone...
Because it was kind of already presented that this board wouldn't take any substantive action before hearing the report of the technical review committee. And since he will do the separate review and participated in that meeting.
Okay.
Yeah.
Does anyone on the board have any questions for the applicant? Would any members of the public like to ask any questions?
I'm good.
Please state your name and address for all of them.
My name is Regina Simmons. I live at 985 Portland Ave., in Long Island. And with all due respect to the presenters of these nine homes, I'm thinking that there's going to be nine new families, but what about the people who already lived there? That is a very small road leading to that subdivision. Those people have lived there for years. It is going to be a nightmare to the community, an absolute nightmare. In construction and after construction, the traffic leading into that area is really going to impact the community. I don't think it's fair. Just because someone wants to put up a subdivision, their rights come before ours? I don't get it. Don't we have a say?
Thank you, thank you. Anybody else? Please state your name and your...
Yelfon 653 Silver Street. We live on Mid-Aden. The home I live in, I've lived there since I was married 46 years ago. My husband's lived there all his life and it's moved before him for all but the first five years of her life. We, the neighbors have all agreed that this is a good thing compared to what's been there. It's an improvement of the property. Somebody could have come in, I know somebody wanted to turn it into a wedding venue. Another person wanted to put a ton of condos down there. And it's not nine houses, it's seven, because the other two lots are to be kept as open land. We realize it's going to be an inconvenience for a while while it's being built, but we think it would be an improvement. So we've got three of us here right now that we've all agreed that we'd like to see this happen and we've talked to many of the other neighbors and we haven't heard anyone that's been against it.
I'm surprised. I was speaking to you. I thought we were going to be seriously impacted.
Eventually, that property's going to be developed and it could be in a lot worse situation.
Forty cars going on down.
Oh, really? Okay. I was being your champion and I didn't need to be.
Seven private homes is a lot better than, you know, 12 condos or 20 condos or something.
Well, I didn't think that we would have proven 12 condos either.
They're the bosses, they approve.
Why we don't approve of anything?
But just so you know, mostly if I do sound okay for this.
Oh, okay. I stand corrected.
Anyone else for the public to comment? Yes, sir, say it.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So thank you for us all, bro. I'm going to try to explain this as nice as I can. This will be the fourth major project in this town. The last three, in my viewpoint, have all left potential serious safety issues. And I'll start with Wentworth Street. Anybody that's been over to that Wentworth Street will tell you, it's a horrible design. When you go downhill and go against two bogges in the road and have to turn around if somebody's driveway is poor. This past winter, when we had a deliberative session at the town, I asked a select boy, "How does this ever get through the planning board?" The answer was, "I don't know." Very unacceptable answer of my point, right? But yet, we had to vote on it or we were going to go to court. So I just caution you guys, the second one, the development up in Clement Road, 300 foot of sight. To date, that has never been publicly told to anybody how they come up with that. And I've asked that question to more than one person. Still unacceptable. The next one, Lewin's Project, Railroad Avenue, the parking lot back there. You're going to put a number of cars down that road that hasn't been seen in years. And on that road, we have a person that lives there, that lives in a wheelchair. No consideration given to the residents. If you guys got problems and questions, don't be afraid to bring your outside engineering help. That's what they needed and I think they really lacked on some of these decisions in the past. Now this going forward, this short section of Silver Street down there is narrow and it's not built very heavy. And now you're going to quadruple the traffic. You may want to consider taking that in part of the requirements of this development. That's what we've really lacked. We've given the farm away, in my opinion, in this town and got nothing for it. Thank you.
Anybody else? Yes, sir.
Tom Ellis, 652 Silver Street. You don't know how much traffic there was with Dr. Bennett owning that place down there. It was cars, trucks constantly coming in and out. Nighttime, daytime, you have junk delivered at night so nobody would see it. I don't think seven houses is going to add any more traffic than there used to be with Dr. Bennett down there. He had 53-foot trucks back down the road, you know. I don't know if everybody saw it, but we saw it. So I don't think seven houses is going to be any more traffic than there used to be with all his dealings he had going on.
Thank you. Anybody else?
I just want to make a comment, because I think there's a problem with public perception when it comes to planning and development in town. I think a lot of people would love to see nothing further ever get developed in Rawnsford. And lots of us live here because we love the rural character of this place and we want to maintain that. And that's reflected in the master plan and that's why we have a master plan. However, this body has to weigh that against also a property owner's statutory right to maximize the potential of their property within our regulations. So we allow subdivisions because we have to allow subdivisions, because property owners get to maximize the value. So if you could fit a subdivision, you get to do that. The role of the planning board is to make sure that it fits the regulations and to hear from the public. So whenever these things happen, we put it in the paper and we notify the abutters and we let the public know because we want to hear from you. But what we need to hear from the people are traffic concerns, safety concerns, aesthetic concerns, things that might impact property valuations or your water pressure next door or some other kind of impactful things like that. But in the end, you can't just say no to a subdivision because you'd rather not see a property develop. So sometimes that gets confusing for people because they like things the way they are and change is hard.
Thank you very much.
Can I add something else?
Yes, sir, please.
Since I live right there, looking at that barn is an eyesore. I don't know how Dr. Bennett ever got permits to put all that up there, but I'd rather see the barn gone and a few nice looking houses there. And it's not, we live right there, so it's going to be open space next to our house. I mean, it could have probably been two, three more houses put in that open spot where they're going to have the open way in. It could have been three, four more houses I beg you, to squeeze, squeeze it in. I'd rather look out my side window and see an open spot and look out my back door and see the barn gone and the nice house. You know, if you're, you know, it's been a circus.
Thank you very much. All right, so I believe that's the issue, whether or not we find the altercation.
Let's suspend here. We're going to suspend it.
That's what I was...
Rather than closing it, yeah.
Right. All right, anyone second? All right, all in favor of suspending the hearing until...
The next planning board meeting, which we haven't set yet.
The next planning board meeting, we haven't set yet, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? All right, the ayes have it. All right, so Mr. Brigham and Mr., I know you're very interested to move forward. I know your plan's been thoughtful, but there are some issues here we need to look into, but we'll see with the next planning board meeting.
So we work behind the scenes a little bit to try to get clarification on the issues that are at hand and then resume hopefully at the next meetings.
You have my email address and feel free to touch base with me and I will certainly likewise do the same.
Just so I know exactly what to do, I don't want to stall you.
Come to the next planning board meeting.
We'll be there. So, is, is there a deadline that the new draft issue resolve beforehand or new materials to you or?
I think, um, the only, I think the big consideration with that regard is how much time Mr. Krebs would need to, and also Mr. Stevens to review revisions. Open to suggestions, maybe the regular twenty days, I don't know.
I would like to take a lot, a lot of them as well.
Well, that's kind of like what we're trying to, you know, I think he's going to need that information ahead of time to... He and Mr. Clark and I are going to see, you know, we're going to read through regulations and read what he is going to send over to us about what he thinks applies and we'll review that and if it comes to legal, then we'll get a legal opinion about it and, um...
What do you mean, I mean, we resolve in-house. I mean, I'm not interested in that. I, I would like to voice that I'm very appreciative of you working with the town. And also, change is inevitable, change has to happen and we appreciate that you're also keeping the town's interest in mind with the open space, encouraging your abutters. And you need to mention previous history of the property, was it been active there? And obviously, as I stated earlier, there could have been a lot more development on this piece of land, you know.
I'm trying to do the right thing. I, I think these...
That's appreciated.
I think when you, when you see the whole case, it'll be clear and you won't need to bring in a attorney. I think Jay missed something. He's more name than Hampshire and I, I think it'll be easier to clarify than, than...
Yeah.
I'm pretty positive on that. Having seen what he did this afternoon for research, you're pretty clear.
So we, we have to get that stuff to you quickly, so we need that meeting, we need a water line, water, the hydro test, we need to go along with that setup. And certainly, yeah, quite next year, we could have that idea.
I'm working with, what was his name, Ray, from the water department?
Ray.
I've already had a lot of the question with him. He showed me with the sewer ends, I think it's, um, we talked about booster pumps to get pressure off the different avenues and that's resolvable. And I think when, when the meeting is all done, this will be resolved. So, I, I don't think, um, I don't think there's any major showstopper. It's just another delay, but we, we...
It's a process.
But there's enough missing where you can't accept jurisdiction with the plan, basically, is what you're saying, because of the water pressure or the...
To my mind, the whole situation about septic and lot size is...
So Jay?
Is, it could be a substantial risk of revision. So, you know, we got to resolve that one way or the other to know what version of the plan to approve, I think is the big sticking point.
I think we can. Jay missed something. I think he'll see that. So that'll, that'll be easy.
Thank you very much. And we appreciate all, everyone's comments from the, we're, we're your neighbors too. We appreciate it. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I know, it's amazing.
Wait, I, I don't think I know this fellow.
Oh, French names, Richard Fooker, sorry.
So Glenn's an alternate?
An alternate. Yeah.
And he's been an alternate for a very long time.
Richard, Richard. Richard Fooker. Oh, okay. And I'm Wendy's. And, and Wendy's, I just said.
Isn't that one through Wendy?
Yeah.
Okay, so I, I apologize for that. Is everybody, is everybody, is everybody acquainted now?
No.
Okay, so I'm...
First lines.
So we approve the minutes?
No, I'm seconding the motion that we approve the minutes of the meeting.
Who's first, okay.
Um, I think Glenn did. Oh, no, I'm sorry, Kevin did.
All in favor of approving the May minutes, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Aye, carries?
Um, there is one change correspondence actually.
Now, I gave away my subdivision, or my...
Yeah, I can send you the files.
Will you?
What do you, what do you need?
Well, I mean, the regulations... She had just got her day regulations because last time I got one. I gave away...
So, um, there's no action to be taken from this correspondence, but this is from the Department of Transportation. It's a dredge and fill application from their wetlands program manager at the Wetlands Bureau of the Department of Education. They are notifying the town and the planning board and other parts of the town about, um, this is a dredge and fill application and basically it's notice of, um, the property on the corner of General Sullivan Way and Portland Avenue. They have a shallowly buried essentially piece of metal, but it's a communication device for Sky Haven Airport. And it needs to get replaced and so, um, they have an easement and they're going to access that from General Sullivan Way and they've been in contact with the property owner and they're going to, at some point soon, dig that up and replace it. So they're notifying of that, us of that. I have the full application. Anyone who wants to take it home and read it is welcome. So I, I also have it electronically and I will forward it to you. That might be easier to read. As I said, there's no action to be taken.
It's easy to access this?
They do.
Okay. And there's, as far as input from the abutters or the property owners around you? Is it really now because it's easy?
It's an easement.
It's an easement.
I'm, I'm just trying to follow. Where's the, um, airport in Manchester?
It's, like, it's, it's some kind of beacon or radio device that helps them, helps the instrument panels locate where they are.
Oh, okay.
You know, when you're flying around, it's hard to know and you're seeing just big sky, where you are in relationship to the ground and that, that thing's supposed to help with that. And that's about all I know. Um, perhaps when the airport came to be...
Yeah, in the flight path of, you know, not peace and somewhere that was okay by the FAA for them to use.
Yeah. Yeah.
Did he build it?
Right. So I will forward you the email and if any of you have any questions, you'll see in the email the contact for the project and feel free to reach out and if you wouldn't mind sharing whatever you learned from that, if you have something to find. If not, learn something.
So it doesn't need it anymore?
No, they need it. They have to replace it because, you know, I think it's just aged out or deteriorated or what have you.
So is the next meeting agenda setting the date of last meeting?
So, the, um, the next scheduled date is the day right after Labor Day, so we just have to decide whether...
So what would a folks preference, would we rather be after Labor, the Tuesday after Labor Day or push it back a week? What people like to do?
I was just thinking as you said that.
And I was going to say, Eddie, with, with the next meeting, I think you probably would have more of the locals. In my neighborhood, I mean, we had the folks that lived right next door, but we didn't have a lot of folks with the four, five, six houses around. And I think you're going to see that next time. If there's possibility that the, uh, the plan will be more complete.
So we'll be talking to ten?
Second to...
Is that...
That's fine.
Ten and Richard, does that work for you?
It works, yeah.
Yeah, I'll motion to the next time we need to attend.
Second.
All right, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Anybody standing? So I think that's, so motion, anything else on the agenda, right? All right, and so we did have two months off. I think with Ern, our two months off of this project will be pretty shortly. So, uh, they would like to make a motion to adjourn.
Make a motion to adjourn? Um, unless you want to hear public comment?
I'm sorry?
That's okay, Mr. Chairman. Thank you. I have a rebuttal to what you said about change. And I got no problem with change. But those three issues that I gave you are serious safety issues. I really think you need to go to that road because you're not going to get an ambulance by an oil truck or a propane truck in the event that's needed. That, the road is narrow. So when I asked the question, how did it ever get through the board? I didn't appreciate the answer. I don't know. There had to have been somebody that was there. And the only person that was there in all three of these projects I named is Krebs. I realized, you people aren't the only residents like me. You don't hold engineering degrees. You know, if it don't make sense, bring in outside help. That's what you're there for. It makes your decision easier. Would you agree with that, Mr. Chairman?
You know, Sonny, I'll say that I had a concern about the federal property's sightline and the sightline in the, in the, our regulations said that it was there. I mean, I...
Nobody said how it was conducted. And that's what I was trying to find out. So if you're talking about the one on Clement, correct? All right, say a road comes out to the side of Clement. Even if you stood right at the edge of the pavement in which you'll never see a, a set of eyes, you're going to be back at least, what, six, eight feet from the side of the road if, if you're coming to the stop sign? You should have clear line of sight left and right three hundred feet. Superman maybe, but not any of us here.
That was a major issue of concern at the, uh, at that...
But it was never explained. I even asked the question, how was it conducted? It's all done. That's all it kept getting.
I think, I think you have some...
There wasn't a review on that. There wasn't a review on that because that was such a, that was a voluntary contention and it wasn't addressed because if it was addressed, it was, it was an obstacle that would actually stop the project. So I can't cite specifically how that was determined.
But see, it was done by some outside concern, but nobody ever sat down and said, this is how it actually went down. So, I mean, I look at it objectively, three hundred feet? You'd be, you'd be really pressed to do a hundred.
So, Sonny, I hear you and I absolutely agree with you that all these concerns are valid concerns and things that we need to hear and consider. And we do have Jay Stevens, um, an engineer, qualified civil engineer, to review these projects at the applicant's expense for exactly these reasons. And we have technical review committee now, which I'm not sure was in place at that time, so that all department heads and the engineer and Tom Clark can all sit down with Mr. Krebs together and we can have these conversations and work these things out and ask those questions. So, you know, part of my response to you is we're getting better. We're learning and getting better.
I, I brought them three up just as a highlight because I'm seeing some faces here that I haven't seen before. No disrespect, but like I said, you know, you're residents like me, you're human beings. I don't know, maybe you guys are all engineers from some...
Human being.
Well, we do have due diligence and we ask the people that are qualified. When someone, when, when someone makes, uh, or performs a duty for us that, you know, because it's an expert, they're an expert in the field and they're putting their name and their license behind that. Me, as a, as a, as a property owner, and I look at that, this is a man that should know this, he's willing to put his name on it and he, he reviewed a certain aspect of a, of a, of a development that we specifically said, does this fit? He gave him all of our paperwork and when he comes back and he says it fits, I accept that. If it's a, if it's an obstacle that must be addressed and it gets addressed and we move past it.
Wouldn't you ask, okay, why does, why does it fit? I mean, may, maybe I'm just more curious than what you might be, but just because he says it's okay, why is it okay?
Because it's not my background and, and I, I appreciate your points too. Safety obviously being a concern. Um, but he may explain to me and I'm not even qualified to judge as it's not my field of expertise.
But when he could explain to you why he at least thinks it's okay. And that's what, you know, on that line of sight issue, that's never been done. All I had heard all the time was, it's done. It's okay. It's good. You know, and I found that to be totally unacceptable as a resident of this community.
I think that might be a symptom also of this board not being the right kind of, um, having the right kind of expertise to say exactly what was done, except to say that an expert certified that it qualified. And, and so that there's no way to, you know, remember and then understand their process and know except to say that...
I would have put that onus onto the applicant because he had his engineer all the time here and he wouldn't even step up. He'd clam right up. So, I mean, all that too and it was just infuriating, it made even more. I'd want an answer. It's that simple. Explain it.
I wish we had more people like yourself to come to these public meetings. We have these public hearings for this purpose. I'm just a whole property owner like you are in town and I, I want the best for town. Appreciate input from the public.
I'll give you a prime example. I was sitting in this room when C and J put, was getting their okay to put up their third building. I think everybody knows who I'm talking about. They spent more time talking on what type and where the trees were going to go. You know, I mean, they were rimming picky, the planning board. I mean, right down to the tree. And then I look at these other three projects and want to say, jeez, what did they do? Get approved at the local gin mill? And I'm not saying it'd be sarcastic, but you need to view it from my point. But it's horrible improvement. And I think that road's going to come back to get us. Or the reason I say that is it's going to get pushed. Either the snow's going to narrow it up and we, as taxpayers here in town, are going to be forced to widen the road. When in fact, oh, you guys are going to say no. Make the road to the right width. It's all up to you to design it.
We can only do what the regulations say we can do. So, so the road regulations or whatever they are in our regulations, if, if, you know, twenty feet qualifies, we can't say...
Twenty feet might be great, but what about the, what about the downgrade?
I, I don't disagree, but you know, that's working on regulations. So we can't hold them to something that's not in the regs.
I don't think, I, I, I don't think that's in the regs. I mean, that's just a plain outright safety issue. I, I really would invite you all to take a look at that road to see how, you know. I spoke to a couple of residents over there that I bumped into and they said, the road is really narrow and horrible. We love living over there. So, I mean...
Are you talking about Silver Street, the, the dead end? What do you...
No, I'm talking about Wentworth.
Yeah.
You know, that probably, that road should have been probably moved in a different location and, you know, there we go. That's up to an engineer to figure it out.
Just keep talking to us.
Yeah, well, I am an engineer.
No, but you know, you keep us grounded and you'll keep, you know, make, helping us ask the right questions.
We're all in this together.
You really got to take a hard look at the end of Silver Street though. I mean, I don't think the base of the road is going to take the heavy pounding that's going to be done when the equipment starts rolling in and out of there.
Probably because we're finding that most of our roads don't have the base that they should have.
But if it fits regulation, if it fits regulations, we cannot deny it if it's regulations on personal preference or...
And we can't hold up their construction because our road isn't up to some standard, you know.
There we go. Lay it right into them. Say, hey, if you damage the road, you're going to be responsible for repairing it. See, I mean, it's like in the, in the spring. If you've got a heavy truck going across the road and the frost is coming out, without their approval, and you damage it, you're going to have to go back and fix it.
And we have done that. I want you to know, we, we have done that. It happens. You're right, it happens. And, and when we notice and people write to our attention, we do do something about that. So keep talking to us.
I just have a question. You keep talking about regulations. Are they the town's regulations or are they the state's regulations?
We have to follow all the regulations.
No, but I'm saying that you're going according to the regulations. Which regulations are we discussing?
Mostly at hand are the zoning ordinance and the subdivision regulations.
Which are in place... Which are in place in the town.
Which are Rawlsford documents.
Okay.
Is it, is it not that we, we can't overstep the state regulations? We can make them harder, but we can't make them easier? Is that the way that it works?
Okay, that's what I was wondering. Thank you.
And so, when you all have recommendations and think that our regulations aren't what they maybe should be or could be to fit the best interest of the town, the subdivision and site review documents can be revised by the planning board. The zoning ordinance is a one-shot per year on the ballot revision. So, you know, that's a slower process and, and, you know, but it all takes work on this...
And to be honest, when it's on that, when it's on that piece of paper, not enough people know what that regula, what, what you're changing enough to make a decision that really, whether it should or shouldn't.
So, we have public hearings before it's on the ballot because we're required to. And so, it, it's, it, it points again to the need to have people to come and learn about what's going on and engage and ask us questions and tell us how they feel about things.
Exactly, exactly. You know, it, it comes down to, you, more people need to be informed. Make an informed decision and if they can't bother to come to a public hearing for an informed decision, then don't sit back and be a chair quarterback and say, this is the way it should've been.
One thing you guys do though, that you, that your hands are tied, I've been told, is when you make a zoning ordinance change and go to the public for the ballot, you're only allowed to put just so much explanation. That, that is wrong. I mean, now, I know what you're gonna say, but I don't know why you couldn't have a, a secondary flyer to fully explain i- in normal terms.
We're actually required to have, at the deliberative session and on election day, the full text of the revision. So, just know that, like, you know, you can't, you can't, you know, the cost and space of putting a big revision just isn't practical. So, a summary of, of what the change is and what, pointing to Regulation eight point two point one zero or what have you is, is the best that we can do. But, but rest assured that the full change is always available in paper form at the public hearing ahead of time, deliberative session and at the ballot. But nobody looks at it.
Explain it. Sometimes just a simple layman's explanation does a world of good because some people have voted for stuff and they actually admitted after they found out, I went the wrong way.
Well, right, and point taken, which is why I'm really trying to work with the select board to improve, like, to continue the voter guide and improve it and get it, you know, to, that it really is the point of the voter guide so that everything on the ballot is in layman's terms for the people so that they understand what the implications are and what the consequences of voting or not voting for it might be. Absolutely, you know, we know that it's not really layman's English. But, you know, so, public hearings, voter guide.
I think you got an opportunity in front of you to make something nice, but you don't need to give a faraway just because certain things don't meet the criteria and say, oh, waive it. And that was a great thing that I thought that the previous planning boards did. Oh, we can waive this and we can waive that. Wrong.
So, you see, you know, when we came for the zoning board, they had to come back to, you know, to make a second presentation to make changes. So, um, I know that, uh, the zoning board took a hard look at it and I'm sure this board will take a hard look at it too.
I'm sure.
Fresh minds we have on the board.
Well, you and I went at it, I mean, in a nice way. But we were in disagreement on a lot of things. How was that?
They went, the zoning board did go around and around and around about it because they didn't wanna set the precedent of allowing one per, one lock to go to the two hundred feet when everything else was two, what it says, two fifty.
That's the first time that's happened. We go way back in time to when Fred Berry wanted to build on the side of, you remember that? Yeah? No? They wouldn't let him encroach. You know, and we're talking going back many years. That was back in the what?
Twenty-five years, twenty-five, thirty years ago?
Well, it was more than that.
He wanted to put in a shared housing thing.
Yeah, well...
He didn't wanna call it nursing.
All right. They would like to go.
All right, uh, I'll put in a motion again to adjourn. Make a motion to adjourn in a second. I'll have it sound.